Ladies and gentlemen, I will now call to order for the last time. The December 1st council meeting for the Fullerton City Council. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mayor Seaborn, for the last time. Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgerald, here. Councilmember Chapey, here. Councilmember Florrie, here. Councilmember Whitaker, present.
Great. At this time, will you please rise for the invocation? We did have some guests from Tender Touch Ministries that were going to be here. I don't see them in the audience, but if they are, wave your hands. Okay. So with that, if you'll please bow your head and join me. Heavenly Father, we're gathered here to do the business of the people. We ask for your blessing and your guidance so that we can make wise decisions that benefit this community. In your name, amen. And would you please face our flag? And ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Any closed session report?
There's no report this evening.
And any ex parte communications?
Yeah, I met with John Fugat and Dan. Dan? I can't remember. Lancaster, I'm sorry. From the Fullerton Firefighters Association. We talked mainly about the JPA establishment and our labor negotiations came up in a general way, but there were no requests made, no promises made.
Thank you. With that, we're going to take one comment out of order to assist our Assemblywoman Young Kim, who is getting ready to head off to another event, and her time is precious. But I understand you want to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor Greg Seaborn and members of the council. Thank you very much for allowing me to say a few words. It's the season to be jolly. I just wanted to come by and say hello and tell you how wonderful and privileged it is for me to represent the city of Fullerton in Sacramento. And as you are doing the reorganization today, I wanted to stop by quickly to recognize the wonderful contributions that you, Mayor Greg Seaborn, has made during your term as mayor, leading our city and taking care of all the businesses in the community, just being a good mayor, just being a good representative for our community. So I wanted to extend my sincere appreciation and to the incoming mayor, as if it goes all well, I think I know who that is, and to everyone else, I just wanted to congratulate you for being good stewards of the city. And I look forward to working closely with you in the next coming year as well. So thank you very much as a proud citizen of city of Fullerton. What a privilege and honor to stand before you. Thank you very much, and I would like to wish everybody happy Christmas or Merry Christmas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Young Kim. Now back to our regularly scheduled agenda. We have a presentation, actually a couple of presentations. First, I believe is by Public Works. And it's about El Nino preparations.
Thank you, Mayor. As our superintendent Dennis Quinlan is going to come down, like most agencies, a lot of information about El Nino out there. So Dennis has been named our lead on preparing for El Nino. We wanted to just make sure that both city council and citizens were aware of actions we're taking.
Good evening. Mayor Seaborn, members of the council, here tonight to give you a little brief rundown on the efforts we've been making amongst the various departments for the upcoming El Nino. We've been working to review the historical areas that we've typically had issues with, areas we know that flood, identifying initial steps in implement prep work. We've met several times. I think we started in mid-October and we're meeting regularly to discuss the various operations we need to undertake. We're looking at the slopes. We know all the slopes that are suspect. Harbor Boulevard, we hit typically. We just recently did some work on Berkeley Slope. We're reviewing the operation of the underpasses, the pumps, to make sure that they're in working order. The city infrastructure protection, we've got all the traffic control devices and equipment staged and ready to go. We have them in trailers. We're ensuring all the roof drains and downspouts are all taken care of. Sewer manholes are subject to anything that is subject to significant intrusion with water. We make sure those are sealed. We're looking at the recreational trails that we know can be problematic in terms of get the rain getting in there and getting muddy and tracking it all over and people making it unsafe. So we're taking care of that. Bray Dam especially, we're closing that off. Logistically, we're putting together the FEMA equipment list, and that will be with the county to ensure the mutual aid is covered in terms of equipment. We make sure that our Republic contract, our Republican contract is in place for debris removal. We've relocated. We have an existing portable generator that's a 300 kilowatt generator for the community center, which is in place and ready to go. We fired it up. Ready to go. We monitor, we'll be monitoring Fullerton Creek, Lemon and Harbor as the, if we get notification on the dam is going to release water. The additional training efforts we're taking on, we're doing cross-training. We know potholes are always a big issue here in town during the rain, so we will be bumping up the staff for that. We're just going to have additional people out there on the streets and filling those in. You know, I know there's nothing worse than driving over one of those. So we're additionally doing chainsaw training. We know that a lot of brush comes down. We're, have a great contractor in town, West Coast Harbors, but we supplement their crews as well to remove debris off the streets and clear the streets as soon as we can. We did our EOC setup at Public Works office in conjunction with the CERT group. We can put that thing together in about 20 minutes. It's just, it really works together well. Chief Kenaby is having an additional EOC training here in December. I think it's first couple of weeks of December. And Chief Hughes and Chief Kenaby are putting together additional training for their vehicular and swift water rescue. This is a overview of the FEMA flood zones. If you go to that website, you can see a much more in-depth version of this. It's got streets and everything on there. You can see that what is subject to the.
Is the gray area the flood?
That's the 500-year area. And the blue areas are the 100-year, correct, Mr. Kenaby?
That's correct. And this is really just a crude approximation of what actually is on file with the federal government. And we put this up here because we do get quite a few questions this time of year as to whether or not I need flood insurance from private property owners, and they really need to check with their insurance company. And they often call us. And if they call the city manager's office, we have them redirected up to engineering. We try and get as close to the answer as we can. So that's why I'm here, just so everyone knows it's on the webpage with that link so you can actually do the investigation yourself.
Yeah, we pulled that up today and looked at it. It's very specific. You can get right down to your street. Private property preparation, we just are, would like everybody to make sure that they're familiar with, you know, how the rain affects their property, the downspouts, their gutters are clean. Once it's, if it's in the gutter and it's coming out, where is it going? You know, make sure that you don't have depressions around the adjacent to your property. Roof repairs, make sure that your, you know, your roof's in good order and update your flood insurance if you're identified in a 100-year flood zone. It's always good to have the prepare, you know, prepare your disaster kit. Inspect the trees in the vicinity of your home. As you all are aware, the amount of trees we've been removing at Hillcrest Park, that's, those were just big trees that I'm just waiting for the windstorms to come and take them down. So we're disappointed we need to do that, but we're doing it for the safety of the citizens. Any questions, anybody has? We're fielding a lot of questions already at the office, but please feel free to call our office there at the 738-6897 number. Fullerton Community Center has been designated as the primary evacuation center. We are working with La Habra. Mr. Schickling's crew is, and we're working to determine if there's going to be any issues with the burned off areas up there in Cotty Hills. If you have any questions, like I said, concerning any private property issues, call us. We have the sandbags available at two locations, at Fullerton Station Number One, Fire Station Number One, and down at the yard on Basque Avenue. I've loaded several sandbags myself. So if they're down there, come down and get them if you need them. And we're doing 15 bags per car just because of the fact of the weight issue. I loaded 15 into my car just to see what would happen, and I was kind of low in the back end. So that's the concern. These are all great websites. We pulled up through Orange County Public Works. Obviously, theirs ours on the top, that will be up shortly. We'll have links to all this stuff, all these sites here, but they're all very good. That El Nino website on the County of Orange is excellent. It's got a lot of information. Additionally, this is the, kind of the hotspot alert system that you can pull up and see what the status is. It's updated every eight minutes, you know, in the event of a heavy downpour. You can really see what's going on. It's got three or four locations specifically in Fullerton. Bray Dam, I think there's one at Fullerton Airport, and then also one at Richmond, by Richmond School. I think that's Fullerton Creek. And I think.
That's the last slide.
Anybody has any questions?
If a person goes to our website, will they be able to see all these references?
Yes.
And is there a button like on the front page so they can get to it easily?
Not yet, but we're going to get one.
There will be.
Do you do that? Okay.
Yeah, we can.
And then I would just mention too that we have an app that you can make sure that you download to your smartphone or your device, My Fullerton app. And so even now you can and should be reporting and taking pictures of potholes on your street or down trees, and that is a graffiti, a lot of things that, you know, need to be reported. Just go to, download that My Fullerton app and start using it now, and that'll be helpful, I think.
Yeah, it's good to get practice on it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
With that, we have another presentation, this time the Bike Boulevard.
Excuse me? All right. Ready to go. Mayor Seaborn, members of the council, thank you very much. My name is Karen Hallusa. I'm the Director of Community Development. And in 2012, when the city adopted the Fullerton Plan, which is the city's general plan, one of the components was a bicycle element, a chapter specifically dedicated to bicycle policies and bicycle infrastructure. And we have a component of that program that we want to talk to you about tonight. It was one of the first action items in the short-term implementation plan that's in the general plan, and it was the establishment of a facility that we call a Bike Boulevard. And each of you should have a postcard up there at your desks that is our, some of our marketing materials. We've established a new program called Fullerton On The Go, and this is the branding program that we have that we will use for all projects that are related to increasing mobility choices for Fullerton residents. So whether that's a bicycle facility, or a sidewalk, or bike lanes, or improvements to car sharing programs, or any of these other sorts of infrastructure improvements, that will be part of Fullerton On The Go. The Bicycle Boulevard has been installed on East Wilshire Avenue, and I'm not sure if any of you have had a chance to either drive it or ride it just yet. Thank you. I'm glad some of you have. I'm sure some people in the audience have. And we're getting all kinds of comments, some positive, some negative, some confused. And so we have a public marketing campaign and education campaign. And we have a three-part video series that we've produced, the first two segments of. And with any luck, we'll be able to show you the second segment here. And if that's not the case, would like to say that on the postcard is a website address. And that website is specifically dedicated to the Bike Boulevard project. It has all the information there about the street design itself, and it also has links to the videos. And fantastic, here is, here is the website itself. So if you do go to cityoffullerton.com on the main front page, there is a link to the Bike Boulevard Pilot Program. And there's a link for a survey feedback button that you can use right from there. We are promoting this through, both through the city's website as well as through social media such as Facebook and Nextdoor. Some of you might be on that. It's very targeted to neighborhoods in Fullerton, so that's a great communication tool for us as well. And then we also do have a flyer that is helpful tips to navigate a traffic circle. We have our introductory video on what, just what is the Bike Boulevard. And then tonight, real quickly, it's about two and a half minutes, we wanted to show you our video on how to navigate a traffic circle. That seems to be the most questions and comments that we get, and it is new to a lot of people. We do have a few here in town already, but they may not be in places where everyone goes. So for folks who live along or travel along Wilshire and are learning how to use the traffic circles, I hope that this little video will help out.
As part of the East Wilshire Bike Boulevard Pilot Project, temporary traffic circles have been installed on Wilshire Avenue at the intersections of Pomona, Balcom, Berkeley, Lincoln, and Anan. This video will provide some helpful tips for cars and bicycles to safely navigate a traffic circle. Temporary traffic circles are designed to mimic a permanent traffic circle, like the ones you find here in Fullerton at Valencia Mesa and Laguna Road, or in Amherst Heights. What's great about these temporary traffic circles is that they allow the city to test out the effectiveness of different types of improvements on the Bike Boulevard using low-cost materials. Temporary traffic circles work just like permanent ones to create an intersection where traffic travels around the central island in a counterclockwise direction. Here's Matt with four safety tips to keep in mind while navigating a traffic circle.
Number one, slow down. Aim to reduce your speed to 15 miles per hour or less while driving in the Bike Boulevard, and be sure to watch out for pedestrians and cyclists. Number two, yield. As you prepare to enter the traffic circle, give the right of way to cars and bicycles that are already in the traffic circle, as well as to pedestrians crossing the street. Number three, always go right. Even if you are ultimately trying to go left at the intersection, you always enter the traffic circle by heading to your right, and then continue in a counterclockwise motion around the circle until you reach your exit. And finally, use those turn signals. Let other cars, bikes, and pedestrians know your desired exit by signaling when you leave the traffic circle. And remember to always yield for people crossing the street. So to recap our tips, slow down, yield, always go right, and use those turn signals. Thanks for watching. And to stay up to date on the Bike Boulevard, visit our project website at the URL listed below. Your feedback is valuable, so please continue to send in those comments.
And that concludes my presentation. For folks who are here in the audience tonight, I will put some of these outside on the table. If any of you would like to take one, feel free. And the website address is on there so that you can find out more information about Bike Boulevards. And if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
I think we do.
Sure.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Yes, I've seen some confusion already with the test as to whether motorists and/or bicyclists need to observe stop signs or not. To get a true test of the traffic circle, the stop sign should be non-functional, correct?
It depends upon the particular location. So in this case, because we wanted to take a very conservative approach, and this was a new thing, we did go ahead and leave in the north-south stop signs at some of the intersections. So the east-west is continuous, but the north-south at some of the intersections do still have the stop signs. So where there is a stop sign present, regardless of the presence of a traffic circle, you always do want to obey the stop sign first and then proceed on to the traffic circle after that. We're going to be testing different configurations. I think as people get more familiar with the traffic circle configuration, we will then test out phasing out the stop signs as well. But if you do see a stop sign at any time, stop.
Any other comments or questions? You know, the only comment I'd add to that is, the streets sure look bad there. They're all broken up. That's just embarrassing. Next time we make a video, maybe we need to lay down some asphalt first. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Okay. With that, that concludes presentations. We'll now move into public comments. Madam Clerk, how many speaker cards do you have?
I have several here, but it looks like they are for item three.
Okay. So let's go ahead and poll item three.
No. Well, let's do the unrelated to the consent calendar first.
We will. We will. But we're going to pull item three so that we can take that as a separate matter, just like any other item on the consent calendar. Were there any requests to poll anything else, and that may?
Just three, and I believe we have about four other speakers that will be on regular public comments.
Pull item five.
Three. I heard five. I was going to pull that myself. Anything else? No? Okay. So we'll open up to public comments. If you want any of the consent calendar items polled, go ahead and come on up and let us know. But for now, we're pulling three and five. And then we can go ahead and have public comments on whatever you like. Anything that this council addresses, you'll have three minutes to speak, and we now have the first speaker.
If the rest of the speakers, please line up on the wall behind me.
Good evening. My name is David Curley. I'm not going to go into much detail tonight on the Bray Dam. I am in the process of trying to negotiate something with Councilwoman Florrie. Maybe we can get together. I volunteered to buy you lunch, so if you accept, I would be glad to meet with you. At the last meeting, I showed on the screen portions of the check registers which showed what appeared to be a 94 and a 95 fund, which don't appear in the budgets. So I'm wondering if anyone can offer some clarity on that. Also, does anyone have any comments on the luxury hotel stays that I also pointed out in the check registers? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name's Angela Gambino, and I've been a resident of Fullerton for 40-plus years. I also have my business in Fullerton, but what brings me here tonight is that I am Mayor Greg Seaborn's, one of his big sisters. Actually, all three of us really wanted to talk, but we didn't want to do that to everybody and kill everybody. Lisa, his oldest big sister, is really sick, and she wanted to be here, and she actually was the one that was supposed to talk. So I'm sorry, she's better at this than I am. But we all wanted to say pretty much the same thing. We wanted to let everybody know that we are so proud of you, Greg, and everything that you have done as mayor, we just, we couldn't even be more proud. Your civility, common sense, and tenacity have been well demonstrated this last year. Your desire to make Fullerton a better place to live and work has not been unnoticed or unappreciated. As your sister, I know how much time you've given up for the people of the city. I know how hard you've worked. I know how little sleep you've had, and I know how much of yourself you've given selflessly. I've watched you repeatedly make tough decisions, but have always done what's best, what's in the best interest of the people you represent, and it's that that I'm most proud of. You have a wife that loves you, kids that adore you, a mother that is so proud of you that, in her words, she could pop, and an extended family and network of friends that admire you for all that you have done. You've shown all of us that if something matters to you, get involved and give. One example of that this year were your efforts to bring back the Founder's Day Parade. You wanted a positive community event, and you sure got it. We know your work is not done. We know you have a lot more you still want to do, but we want you to know that we are proud of you, and we want to thank you for your service as a family, but also as multiple residents of the city. But most importantly, we want to know you, we love you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Wiley Drake, and I'm the chairman of the Congressional Prayer Conference of Washington, DC. And I bring you greetings from my co-chairman, Dr. Clyde Rivers, and also say to you that every morning at 6:15 in the morning, the reason we do it so early is that's 9:15 in Washington, and we start there and come all across the country praying for our senators, for our representatives, and indeed for our council members and mayors from our cities. And so every morning at 6:15, we will be praying for you by name, each of you, first and last name, and we pray for you every day, and we will continue to do that. Thank you for your service to the city, to our county, and to our nation.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Package?
Mayor Seaborn. Before I get into what I want to talk about, I'll say, Mayor Seaborn, thank you very much. And I think I've noticed more gray hair this year. Yes? Okay. Good evening. Tony Package. Last meeting, we, Mr. Schickling came up and talked about Phase Four, and we kind of, all of us, including me, kind of told him to go back and get some, a little more something else. And basically, what we were saying was, we need some way of enforcing the rules as we have right now. Now, as we learn, as we learned last time, the Water Department has one staff member to enforce. Thus, we need to hire, help, or reassign people. So you're going to have to face that in two weeks and figure out what you're going to do. Now, the challenges, you know, the challenges, one of the challenges of these people, or reassignment of people, is that most water wasters water their lawn, I tried to say that twice, between 5:00 and 6:00 a.m. So whoever is going to be enforcing has to be up at that time. Now, crazy idea, my wife says it's stupid, and I can't disagree with her because she's my wife, but one of the things I noticed is that we have paper boys out 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning. They, I know they're on contract, and they may not be, they may not be available, but thinking outside of the box, they're out in the streets. Maybe they can just write down some names and times, but that would be a nice thought. Also, in preparation for El Nino, one of the things all the residents should think about in the water, in our parks, should think about is all the lawns that we have that have not been watered. When the water comes, it's not going to soak in the ground. It's going to just wash away. Now, what I'm going to do, because I have a slope in my front yard, is I'm going to aerate my lawn so that I open it up to water. So you might think about something like that for the city parks. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Seaborn, council members, good evening. Barry Levinson. I wanted to bring something to your attention that you may or may not be aware of, I assume you should be aware of, and that is concerning your special meeting last Wednesday. I was out of town, couldn't make the meeting regarding the $4.9 million settlement that you settled for with Mr. Thomas, regarding the Kelly Thomas case. So I was interested in looking at the video. And I went to the website, normally they're up within less than a day, and I looked again again earlier this morning, many days after, almost a week later. And not only is there no video, there's no agenda, there's not a mention that you even had a special meeting. And I'm wondering why you have left that out. Now, the cynical part of me might think that maybe that was done intentionally because they're always up there like clockwork. Why are they missing? And they should be there. As far as the fact that you had the meeting today, I guess you didn't want to spoil the party today, because there was absolutely no reason to do a special meeting at 8:00 in the morning on something that important. It's really sad that the Kelly Thomas situation, death, started out obviously tragic. And it. it ended somewhat tragically, by the way, you, the council decided to handle it by doing it on 8:00 AM on a Wednesday morning before a holiday, when six days later, you could have done it. You had your special meeting on Monday where you approved it. You could have done it today. There was no reason to do it, but that, and then you would have had to give 72 hours notice, and then maybe some people might have shown up. It really, really is sad. You know, this is just process, this is just the way it should be. These are not my rules, these are your rules, this is the city's rules. And for your own whatever reasons, you want it to go away, so it's not on the, it's the agenda, the video is not, no explanation, no nothing. Again, you made a special meeting when there wasn't any real need to do so. So it's sad that the Kelly Thomas saga ends almost as bad as it started. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Joe Mariano, Fullerton resident, I run the FullertonInformer.com website, and I have announced in the past, I'll announce tonight, I'm running for city council in the upcoming election. Mr. Levinson touched on an issue that needs to be brought up tonight. There's absolutely no reason to hand out $5 million when nobody was convicted of a crime, nobody broke any police procedures during that fateful event. So if somebody's dead, but nobody did anything wrong, and nobody went to jail, why are we handing out $5 million? Is that hush money? What's going on here? Have we, have we come to the point where nothing makes any sense anymore? We have a criminal trial that took place, and as Mr. Levinson has repeatedly pointed out on my website, the training officer and the top dog in charge that night said that no policies were violated on the stand under oath. And yet, we spent upwards of $60,000 for Mr. Janaco to investigate the event frame by frame, and his report that was leaked by the Voice of OC clearly stated that there were multiple violations of procedures. So which one is it? So we have a dead man, no one went to jail, nobody was convicted of a crime, and on one hand, no violations of policy were observed, and on the other hand, we're paying $4.9 million on Wednesday morning, we're announcing it to the public with a cut video and audio feed where there's no record of that meeting. You know, it kind of reminds me, back in the summer, it was a hot summer night, when I guess there was some sort of a flood in this room that disabled this, you know, $200,000 system you folks invested in. And the downtown Core and Quarter Special Project was before us all, and no one knew about it, there was no live feed that night either. And that's the plan, to pretty much put eight-story tilt-ups all along these busy arterial thoroughfares and end conventional zoning as we know it and the process that goes along with it. So I have to be a bit more cynical than Mr. Levinson, I think a lot of stuff's going on by design. And I still don't feel safe in this community, because if, if a man can be executed on public television, and the killers can go free, and you've managed to turn community outrage with people practically with pitchforks in their hands to a happy party tonight, I'm concerned that the moral compass is really in the wrong direction for not just this council. I think we have to really look inward as a society, because things are not going in the right direction. I would hope that all of you on this council from this day forward would look inward and look at reality, because it's going to start staring you in the face a lot more than it has been. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. No other speakers coming up, we'll go ahead and close the public comments, bring them back to council for council communication. And I'll start with our city manager. Any response to some of the speakers' questions?
None at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Chafee.
I'd simply report that I've had very constructive meetings with the Chevron representatives and members of the Friends of Coyote Hills, and we're doing everything we can to move that along in a very constructive, positive way for the city. That's my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Florrie.
I have nothing to report, other than was able to take a few days off last week, spend with family and friends, and reset. Had a great Thanksgiving holiday, and I hope you all did too.
Great. Mayor Proton? Nothing. And Councilmember Whitaker.
Yes, although it's been addressed without my knowledge here at the podium, I'm concerned that, that meeting, as it were, on Wednesday morning, Thanksgiving Eve, that it was not videotaped, that video recordings are the norm for our council meetings. I mean, normally, I expect whenever we're in session that that is happening. Many years ago, I was part of an activist group that helped press for video records of city council meetings, and those are archived out on the city's website. And whenever, for whatever reason, meetings are selectively not recorded, I think we all suffer that archive suffers as a result. I know as a council member, very often, issues come up, and I'm able to go back years and refer to meetings, the last meeting may be when a certain item or an area or something was discussed. So I'm concerned as an important housekeeping item, and possibly a failure to meet minimum expected requirements, I'd be interested in knowing who made that call. And this is a city council meeting, it should only be the city council that varies from the norms on how these meetings are conducted. So I would be very interested in hearing how that decision was made, why it was made, and to receive assurance that we are going to record everything that occurs at city council meetings going forward without exception.
City clerk, could you answer that question as far as the recording goes? Is that something that you set up, or you make the call to the cable company to administer that?
We have a standing contract to record all of our regular meetings, special meetings are not part of that contract, so we have to make a special call on those.
Would you please agendize bringing back this item and amending that contract to include special meetings?
And Mr. Mayor, there's one other consideration on this. In the past, Councilmember Chafee has made sometimes seemingly minor amendments to our minutes. And increasingly going forward, prior councils have made the video record to be the controlling minutes for our meetings. So an absence of a video record is indeed a problem for us operationally.
I had a follow-up to that. Now, I know I made some statements, in fact, all four council members that were here Wednesday made statements that were to be entered into the minutes, but there are no minutes before us for that day. Is there a plan to bring those back at the next meeting in the form? Okay.
Yeah, we missed the packet deadline with that set of minutes, so it'll be in the next packet.
I realize that, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. Let's see. So we're pulling items three and five, we're going to move into the consent calendar, that's items one through nine.
I'd move the balance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, absaying, thank you. And we'll now look at item three, support for grant funding for open space acquisition in West Coyote Hills. Is there, is staff prepared with the presentation, or do we want to go ahead and take public comments?
Mr. Mayor, before you begin, I need to declare a conflict and indicate that Coyote Hills is being handled by the Lieutenant and Tucker Law Firm, and we have a potential conflict, so I will leave the room.
Thank you for that disclosure.
Mayor, we don't have any specific presentation, this is a resolution of support. In short, what this is, is the council recognizing that we're initiating a grant process, this is a routine with virtually every grant that we apply for. This is part of the strategy following council's denial of the appeal on the West Coyote Hills project. So this is a routine application. That being said, Heather Stratman is here, she's a grant consultant that we've hired for this, to initiate the seeking of grants for the Coyote Hills acquisition plan. We'd be happy to answer any questions. This is a grant that's to the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, an agency that we've worked closely with over a number of years, particularly in the trail system, in and around Laguna Lake and adjacent to the Coyote Hills area.
At this time, I'd say let's go ahead and take public comments, and then if there's questions that are raised, we'll ask Heather to come on up and address those. So this matter, item three, is now open for public comments. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward.
Now, my comments are on West Coyote Hills, but it's not specifically to this resolution. Is that a problem?
Well, this is the item before us, it is about Coyote Hills, so go ahead.
We're going to take opportunity, okay. Good evening, my name is Helen Higgins. At the November 17th city council meeting, several speakers criticized the Friends of Coyote Hills for complaining that the one-year acquisition timeframe was unreasonable. These speakers stated that the Friends had plenty of time to gather funding for acquisition in the past several years, and therefore had no basis for this complaint. I am here on behalf of the Friends to refute some apparent misinformation and to correct the record. In 2007, we submitted an application to the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. In 2008, we submitted an application to the California Department of Fish and Game. In 2011, we applied for the Okta M2 mitigation fund. Coyote Hills was listed in the top-tier category group. In all cases, we were turned down due to a lack of a willing seller. Okta even reached out to Chevron's Pacific Coast Homes in writing, inviting them to participate. Chevron declined. Chevron did not become a willing seller until the VTTM was approved on November 17th. In 2015, we applied and were awarded a $1 million matching grant from a private charitable foundation. In the last 30 days, we have turned over all of our past grant information to the city's grant writer as she gears up to reapply for grants with the same agencies. And I have one more further comment. I was wondering if it is, if there's an opportunity for Councilmember Fitzgerald to clarify what she meant by a better deal in 2012? At the November 17th meeting, she stated that the earlier deal, the development agreement that was voted down in 2012, was a better deal financially for the people of Fullerton. I'm sure the key word is financially, but I think the citizens would really appreciate if what she was thinking could be spelt out. In 2012, the development footprint spread over the entire property on both sides of Gilbert. Chevron was not a willing seller, and therefore, there was no opportunity for any acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. Oh, we do have one. Okay.
Good evening, council. This is about Coyote Hills, but not about what you will be discussing tonight. My name is Shirley Gregg, and I live in Fullerton. One of the summation comments made at the November 17, 2015 council meeting approving the Chevron VTTM had to do with not knowing why Ordinance 3168, Section 2, the referendum petition 3 on zoning, was not on the ballot. Councilmembers, Councilmember Fitzgerald said she did not know why zoning was not on the ballot, nor why people opposing the project never tried to get it on the ballot. I am here to share with you why zoning was not on the ballot. First, Section 1 of that ordinance was not referended for some legal reasons. Section 2 was. At the city council meeting in October 18, 2011, the city clerk, Lucinda Williams, gave instructions and options to the council on how to handle the two ordinances, Petition 3 and Petition 4, that got referended successfully. Lucinda's slides showed the council action was to be either a repeal or to place the matter on the ballot. As for the zoning petition, and I quote for October 18 from the minutes, "Ordinance Number 3172, an ordinance from the city council of the city of Fullerton, California, repealing Section 2 of Ordinance Number 3168 relating to the property that is located at 2701 Rosecrans Avenue in West Coyote Hills. Motion was carried for desiring, absent was Quirk Silva. Therefore, Section 2 of the zoning ordinance did not go on the ballot because the city council repealed it on the October 8, 2011 meeting." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Seaborn, council members, it's nice to say that, and get to say it for one last time. I'm here to talk about the grant, and here before you, as a member of the community, a member of open Coyote Hills, saying that we are supportive of the city moving forward with a grant opportunity to secure whatever additional acreage can be secured without using city of Fullerton taxpayer money. That's always been our plea, is to optimize the maximum amount of open space that is fiscally responsible and selfishly, that means without Fullerton taxpayers paying for it. I do have some concerns, because for 25 years, our firm has worked with clients, including the major arts performing center in Orange County, to help them raise funds through collateral pieces and things like that. And I am very acutely aware, in working with development people who raise money all the time, to the tunes of, over the 25 years, probably about $500 million, that positive attitudes, positive direction, and a positive feeling is key to securing funds. Negativity, potential of litigation, or any other consternation is an immediate turnoff for anyone that has money that is looking to help us. And I would encourage my fellow citizens and the council that we need to move positively forward together, because that is the only way we will be successful in securing additional funds from other people to help us maximize the amount of open space in West Coyote Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers on this matter? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comments, bring them back to council. I don't think there were really any questions that I need answered from our consultant council members.
I'd like to hear from our grant writer, introduce herself, explain the grant, how this fits into other granting possibilities, a little bit of background about herself.
Good evening, Mayor Seaborn and members of the council, Heather Stratman, nice to stand here before you. I've been asked to work on this project to assist with funding applications for the acquisition of the West Coyote Hills open space property. In the short term, the first opportunity that we're working on is the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, as Mr. Fells mentioned. That application is due on December 16th. We are applying for the maximum $2 million for acquisition funding. We are in the final stages of pulling the application together, and we'll be able to submit that one on time. It's looking very good. We are also running parallel to that, we are in the process of pulling together an application through what is the Wildlife Conservation Board, and subsequent to that, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We don't have an amount to be determined on that yet, that will go through an entire biological assessment and a habitat assessment to determine how much money that actually the property would be eligible to acquire funding for.
So what would the potential be, their max?
It could be a max up to probably $10 million, so it's a very substantial amount of money. It's interesting, there is quite a bit of crossover in terms of how the resource agencies sort of look at the full picture of the ability to acquire the property through multiple funding sources. And we really have never had an opportunity like we have today, because we, in 2014, the California voters passed Proposition 1. Proposition 1, most folks think of that as the California Water Bond, but within that, there was significant funding for land acquisition, and a portion of that went to the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy and other conservancies statewide, as well as to the Wildlife Conservation Board. In addition to that, there is still funding through the Orange County Transportation Authority's Environmental Mitigation M2 program, and that will- and that will be a third opportunity that should be pursued for funding.
That funding, as I understand it, is increasing over the years, is it not?
It's based on sales tax revenue. So as sales tax rolls back into OCTA, they are able to basically pool those funds and then allocate out to projects. And now with a willing seller letter, absolutely, this project would be eligible for funding.
So they could do a multi-year funding based on money coming in?
Certainly, yes. And oftentimes, that's the best way to do it as a phased approach, particularly when you're talking about millions of dollars.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions from council? If not, is there a motion?
I have a lot of comments I'd like to make. I appreciate our grant writer, and it's a pleasure to have her this evening. When we had the hearing on the meeting on the seventeenth, I too was concerned about the shortness of time to raise the money. And in that vein, I've had conversations with Jim Puglusi, the Chevron representative. And it's not uncommon for sellers to carry back paper as long as there's an assured funding source. That could extend out the timeframe if we have a five- or even ten-year note. If there's an assured source of payment, that's a little bit of an answer to the short time period that we may be experiencing. I also met with the Friends rather recently, and I compliment them on their fundraising that is going on for quite a long time. They even have been accepting actual donations under various pledge agreements. And they were kind enough to share with me a pledge document, which I will be turning over to our legal counsel to be certain it's something that we as a city could use. They even sent me some minutes of a city council meeting where a city council had established a fundraising program, complete with an escrow to ensure funds were safely secured. And also discussing with the Chevron representative, we'd like to open up the Coyote Hills property to hikes and to let people get in there and see what it really is all about. The Friends have been hosting Saturday hikes, but they do not go beyond the ward property. This would allow you to see in depth what is there. It's possibly going to be a day hike situation, as well as possibly some drives because the property is quite extensive using four-wheel vehicles. So when that comes up, and hopefully it's not raining, I would encourage anyone that has an interest in that to take advantage. I've also discussed a question with our city manager regarding possible tax benefits. We'll be researching that a little bit further. The zoning issue has been a curious one. It actually didn't matter in terms of the price. I'll give you an example. Let's say you were, have agricultural land and you've been raising crops for a period of years. But then the water got too expensive. You couldn't make a profit anymore. Too hard an appraiser to give you a valuation based on some other use. It didn't matter that it was actually zoned for agricultural purposes. The appraiser would look at other uses and appraise it accordingly. That is something that I see happening here. The appraisal was simply attempting to approximate the profit that the Chevron people would have made. And that became the price that they're asking for the property. It really didn't matter how it was or might be zoned. That was the basis for the appraisal to try to arrive at that approximation. What I would like to suggest, if you are interested in contributing, and I hope you will, as a community, that will help the grant applications. They'll become stronger. They'll look better. There's community money involved. The pledge agreement is pretty flexible. You don't have to come with a check today. Indeed, you can commit to making a commitment over a period of years, if you like. I have discussed this among others with my wife. And there are two things that we'd like to pledge to. Once the paperwork is completed, we will be making a financial commitment for two purposes. One, towards the acquisition of Neighborhood Four. We think that's vital. It's a great piece to add to the puzzle. And so that would encourage, I think, Chevron to break that loose and give us a price on that as well. The other thing that we see as missing from the equation is a pedestrian and bicycle bridge over Euclid. When I've been out there, I see bicyclists not paying any attention to crosswalks. I mean, it's crazy. And cars having to slow down. And a pedestrian bridge would help the traffic to flow better and be a safety factor for those who'd like to get over to the preserve and park that's being created over there. I would ask the city manager what experience we might have with that type of arrangement. I think we've had some.
Yes, we have a similar arrangement with the Fox Theatre Foundation as far as establishing an escrow account and managing those funds. So we are familiar with that. That was managing grant funds that came from the state historic endowment. And it was a successful project that led to the renovation of the Fox Theatre. So we do have experience with that. Julia James, our finance director, would be able to put that together.
Okay. So I have some paperwork I will share with the city attorney or special counsel so we can set that up appropriately for Coyote Hills. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move the item.
Second.
Okay. This is motion second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Fleury? No? Anyone else? Okay. With that, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next, we have item number five, the purchase of hot red radios for Orange County 800 megahertz communication system. We had a request to pull this from the public, and I was going to pull it. But if we want to go ahead and have public comments and then staff can answer any questions that are raised. So with that, I'll open it up. Public comments.
Good evening. My name is David Curley. I'd like to discuss something that most people in this room are totally unaware of, I would think. About fifteen years ago, the police departments in Orange County decided to encrypt their radio communications. And what that means is that no one with a radio or a scanner radio of any kind can hear what's going on. This is not cheap. The radios that are being asked to be approved tonight, the encryption feature is an extra $500 to $600. So with all the radios combined, we're looking at about $35,000 to essentially keep more information away from the public. I understand there's some different reasoning, maybe officer safety. But to put that in perspective, LAPD, LA Sheriff's Department, San Diego County, San Bernardino County, the Highway Patrol, even branches of the FBI and DEA do not use encryption. They don't feel it's necessary. So I think this would be a good opportunity to encourage Chief Hughes and the council to maybe make a compromise here. Some cities, such as Burbank, Pomona, and Sierra Madre, have removed the encryption on their primary dispatch channel and then left the encryption in place on their tactical channels. That gives the public and, actually, the news media, an idea of what's going on in every city. So like in Fullerton's case, most of the police traffic would be on their Green One channel. Maybe consider something like removing the encryption from Green One, leaving it on Green Two and Three for, I don't know, surveillance or narcotics types of activities. And that way, I think if people saw, or actually heard, what our police department has to experience, especially downtown Friday and Saturday nights with all the drunks and the fighting and the people getting stabbed, if people could hear that for themselves, I think it would go a long way to really just getting a better idea of what happens in this city and how the police handle it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Barry Levinson. I have a specific comment on this allocation of monies. But I do want to point out that back in July, a report came back from Director Hoppe that it would cost about $400,000, I believe, was the amount to fix Laguna Lake. Since that time, there's been absolutely no mention of that. And I looked at the two forwarding agendas. It's not on, it's not in the January agenda or the next agenda this month. So it's seven months. I'm assuming that that hasn't been taken care of because of lack of money. So you have money for this, but you haven't addressed Laguna Lake. I think the residents of Fullerton deserve an answer as to why you haven't addressed that issue, fixing Laguna Lake. And if you have the money for this, why didn't you? You're coming up with money for something six months after the fact that the Laguna Lake issue was determined and looked at by Director Hoppe at the direction of the council. And he reported that it would cost, I believe it was somewhere between $200,000 to $400,000 to fix it. And yet, since that time, not one word has been uttered, nothing on council agenda. And I think citizens deserve some kind of a response from the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. With that, I'll close the public comments, bring it back to council for further deliberation. I was going to pull this item because of the source of funding is... I was looking at the dollar amount. It is a big amount. And I'm okay with us having these radios. I understand the necessity to have the equipment. I do like that idea of having the open green channels so anybody could hear the regular dispatch. I don't have any issue with that. That seems pretty basic, understanding that all the other stuff would be encrypted. My biggest concern is, why aren't we using asset seizure funds for this? Is that money precluded from this sort of use? If anybody can tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Hughes, your police chief. Two comments. First, when it comes down to the Green One channel and the encryptions, that is a county process that all agencies in Orange County do. One of the reasons that we do that is in terms of operations, certainly for the protection and safety of our police officers so that when we have situations that we have experienced in the past where we have armed robberies and there's information that's being broadcasted, when the police show up, that they're already prepared to either get in a gun battle or to leave that location. Another main reason for it is really the protection of the identity to our community. On all these channels, when we do a record check or warrant check, we give people's name, their address, their date of birth, their driver's license number, where they reside at. And that's great information if you want to be a victim of identity theft. And again, we just have found that there's no overwhelming purpose to remove this from our police radios. And quite frankly, I don't know that we could do so independently without going through the rest of the county of Orange to see if they would allow us to do that. So it's every agency in Orange County. That's our agreement. And so I think it would be very unwise for us to go away from something that would actually put our police officers in danger, as well as our community.
Can you answer the question about asset seizure funds?
I would have to take a look at it. But generally speaking, asset seizure funds cannot supplant general budget aspects of it. So things that are generally used for general budgets, you don't use asset seizure for. I would have to contact the Department of Justice to see if that would be a process we do. We don't normally do that with upgrades. And I don't know that we would have funding. I don't recall what we have in there or what is utilized or what we have anticipated use for asset seizure. But normal general budget funding is generally not allowed to be supplanted by the use of asset forfeiture.
Okay. Could you get an affirmative answer on that?
I can.
I'd appreciate that. I think my understanding is we have plus or minus around $200,000 in asset seizure funds. If we use all or some of that, I think that would be obviously a good thing. Free up the funds for other uses, like Laguna Lake or other issues.
I'll say what the documents are for the proper use of asset forfeiture.
Okay. And with that, I would ask to continue the item until we get that answer.
I will move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay.
May I ask Mr. Hoppe a question about Laguna Lake? It's my understanding that we do have the money to take care of that, but the company that would do the work is unavailable until about April. Is that about the story?
In a nutshell, yes. That's correct.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm familiar with much of the complexity involving the interoperability of the first responder radios and communications. I was a little bit surprised, though, because mostly my focus has been Orange County when I worked at the county of Orange as well. Here we are in the northwest corner of Orange County. And recently, we had the fire where we had LA County Fire assisting this way. And I'm a little bit surprised to find so many other agencies, nearly all of them that we would interface with in Los Angeles County, don't use the heavy encryption that has been described. So I understand it to be an additional cost factor. And there may be some advantages for increasing some amount of transparency where that could occur. So I concur somewhat with the speaker's remarks on this that there may be some advantage to being a little more transparent and at least controlling, keeping necessary confidential traffic away. But I think that allows really some latitude. Complete interoperability and compatibility is something that's going to be difficult. As we read in the agenda materials, the technology that we're working with right now, the Motorola technology now, is relatively obsolete and parts are very hard to come by. I appreciate many of the efforts to acquire components and parts to keep the system operating. But it's very possible that we need to start looking at a longer-term departure from where we're at now and maybe urging the county to do that as well.
Chief Hughes, my question relates to timeliness of this issue. I understand that if these are purchased now, we get a 50% discount. And so I guess my concern about continuing the item would be the potential loss of that opportunity.
That is my understanding, ma'am. Yes. That is accurate.
And I'd like to comment on why I do support this motion with radios that are encrypted. I think that in this day and age, it is not the public, to the public's benefit for everyone who has a police scanner to know where our units are deployed and how they are deployed. I think that recent events worldwide with terrorism activity, et cetera, the public safety, in my mind, is outweighed by the public benefit of listening to police chatter. And when you put, when you overlay on that the fact that personal information is communicated back and forth on the police channel, in my mind, I can support the encryption. Fullerton has participated in this countywide system for, what, fifteen years? It certainly was part of the council when I was on it before. Certainly was part of the council when I was on it before. It is time for the equipment to be replaced, and so I'm going to reiterate my motion to approve the recommendation.
Okay, there is a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. And with that, we come to item number 10. And at this time, I believe our city attorney is going to run the show.
This is the time to select the mayor for the coming year. Before we begin the nomination process, we'll invite the public to come forward and make comment regarding that selection process. Following that, we will then open nominations. Nominations do not require a second and can be made by any council member. So it's a time for public comment.
Good evening for the last time, Mayor Seaborn and council. Good to see you tonight. I just want to bring up an issue that I've brought up a few times before, and it's been also brought up recently in our local news source or two. I'd like to caution the council on appointing the person who's assumed to be the mayor based on not her ability to serve as a mayor, but based on her professional role as a vice president of Kirk Pringle &amp; Associates, lobbying firm that does business with a number of municipalities and potentially some customers, excuse me, potentially some suppliers, people that may have litigation against the city. But because there is no state law requiring the release of the client list of this lobbying firm, we, as residents, our staff proposing contracts, other members on the council are unaware of potential conflicts. So I just wanted to point out that I'm not the only person recognizing these conflicts. When Councilmember Fitzgerald was first appointed to the MWD, she served for a few months, and then when she became a vice president of Kirk Pringle &amp; Associates, I understand that the director had asked her to step down, which she did do because of conflicts and potential conflicts. As well, the FPPC recently fined Ms. Fitzgerald for not having reported on her Form 700 Conflict of Interest Form, her position as vice president of Kirk Pringle &amp; Associates, which, you know, whether that was oversight, it's a pretty big thing. Unfortunately, it was a small fine, and we still don't have any resolution as to whether or not her client list needs to be revealed. So I would like to ask Ms. Fitzgerald if you would please, if you are appointed to this position and you assume that position, if you would please reveal your client list for, for the comfort of the residents that you'll be serving, so that we can be insured that your decisions and your leadership will not unduly bias potentially some clients that we're unaware of. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sam Hahn. I'm representing Grace Ministries today. 2015 has already come and gone, and what a fantastic year we've been able to do. I particularly want to thank the mayor for a lot of his work within the community and certainly representing the needs of not just the faith community, but also just the Asian American community at large. We've been able to do a lot of tremendous things this year, and so we truly appreciate your work. I would like to say, on behalf of Councilwoman Fitzgerald, we've really come to appreciate her a lot, and she's definitely attentive to our needs. And so I do understand the previous speakers and the concerns that are there, but I think as far as our community is concerned, we truly believe that she is a woman of integrity and someone that we can truly trust. So I just want to definitely thank all of you for all your hard work and look forward to working with the new mayor and the council in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
Okay, so no further speakers. We'll now conduct the election. We're now open for nominations. Those nominations are for mayor and chairman, and include both the city council, the successor agency, the public financing authority, the housing authority.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Fitzgerald for mayor.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, our motion to close the nominations.
I move that we close the nomination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. At this point in time, we'll do a roll call then with respect to the election. Ms. Fitzgerald is the mayor. Mr. Whitaker? Do you have an aye or a no?
Aye.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ms. Florrie?
Aye.
Mr. Chafee?
Aye. In fact, I'd like to move that the election of Jennifer Fitzgerald as Fullerton's next mayor be done by unanimous acclamation.
After we conclude this vote, you can make that nomination.
Okay.
Mayor Seaborn?
Aye.
Okay, the motion's now, Mrs. Fitzgerald, you're now the mayor, and if Mr.?
I think you're gonna handle the mayor pro temp.
The next is the mayor pro temp and also for the successor agency, public financing authority, the housing authority, for the mayor pro temp and vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Florrie.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, we will then, that passes the motion to close. Mr. Whitaker, on the vote?
Aye.
Mr. Seaborn?
Aye.
Ms. Florrie?
Aye.
Mr. Chafee?
Aye.
And Mayor Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Mrs. Florrie, you are now the vice chair and mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. I think that there are some elected officials here who would like to make some presentations to our outgoing mayor. And if, at least I did see them earlier, I think we have a representative from Young Kim's office, we have a representative from Senator Huff's office, and if Supervisor Nelson or one of his staff is still here, then I would invite you all to come forward. Please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew. I'm with Assemblywoman Young Kim's office, and I'd like to thank City Councilman Seaborn for your great leadership as mayor.
Former mayor. He's wanted to hear that for a while.
Sorry. And we really want to thank you. We have worked with you on many issues with our office concerning the Fullerton community, and we really thank you for your leadership and your great commitment to service. And I would like to wish the new mayor great success as he take, as he take over. So I have a certificate to present to you, and also the representative from state, Senator Bob Huff's office, was not able to be there, so I'd be presenting the certificate as well.
Oh, sure you can. Yeah, you're representing two. Send them a bill. Thank you.
And former Mayor Seaborn, I'd invite you to make any comments you'd like at this time.
Okay. I have a couple of comments. If you follow me on Facebook, you know I've been counting down this day. And it's not because I haven't enjoyed being mayor, it's not because it's, there weren't some great successes involved. Really, it was counting down the days that I get to spend time with my family again, and I can focus back on my work and family. So I just have a few brief comments. It's not the 26 pages I alluded to earlier, it's a little less. There have been many councils, council members who have served as mayor for the city of Fullerton, and now there are five council members up here that have at some point or another served as mayor. So we're all recovering mayors.
There should be a group for us.
I bet you there is. Truly, it's been an honor and a privilege to preside over our council meetings for this past year. We've had many notable differences of opinion in this chamber. We still manage to maintain decorum and respect for those seeking redress from their elected representatives. I try to lead by example. If you want respect, show respect. So hopefully, hopefully that's been well noted. I had four key objectives this year. First, to deal with the infrastructure, and we're on the brink of some major changes in how we prioritize the, and pay for our roads. Second, city manager Fels took to heart my customer service initiative. As the employees who participated in the training will tell you, they learned a lot about themselves and their employer. Third, I pointed out the need for the city to better understand neighborhood identity. This has been underscored, I think, by the recent discussions regarding district elections. Fourth, I wanted to lend my support to our business community by empowering them to grow and expand. This is one area that still needs a great deal of attention. But overall, I believe these four key objectives were fruitful. My vision and future focus for the next three years will be to continue my work on our infrastructure, our customer service, our neighborhoods, and our businesses. Serving as mayor requires sacrifice, most often, however, it is our loved ones who sacrifice the most, so that we can serve the citizenry's expectations. It is not the ribbon cuttings or photo ops that bring about the greatest challenges, though they are great fun. The greatest challenges come when you're faced with tragedy or disaster, and can do very little except to persevere. Coming together in the face of adversity is Fullerton's greatest strength. Thank you to all the city staff who went the extra mile to help get things done. We have many extraordinary employees. Special thanks to Eva for the personal sacrifices she made in helping me and this council do the work that we do. Thanks also to the volunteers and interns who pitched in countless hours. Finally, I want to thank my wife Stacy. You can wave. You took one for the team. And our three children, two of which are here, Amelia and Isabel, who have had to share me with the city. I could not have done it without the support of my family. My mom, Arlene, who's also here, my dad, Tom, my brother, Tom Jr., both of which are not here, my sister Lisa, who's hopefully recovering at home, my sister Laura, who's here with her daughter Rachel, my sister Angela, and their spouses, oh, and Jacob hiding at the end, picking on his mom. I couldn't have done it without you, without the combined effort of all of you and all of my extended family and friends. Thank you for your selflessness and the gift that you gave to Fullerton by allowing me to be able to serve on this council. And I look forward to this next year, being able to recover as mayor, and I wish you the most of this next year, and wish you much success.
We have some presentations that we'd like to make to you, so if you'd join me down. I want to congratulate the mayor on being done with his term. And, yeah, the former mayor. And just communicate from the whole council, what a great job we all think that you have done as mayor, and the comments that your sister made and that you made, I mean, really typify what a, what a great year it was to be on council together. I know I enjoyed working really hard with you, and we agreed a lot of time, we disagreed a lot of time, but I always knew we were gonna have a thoughtful conversation, and that's all anyone can hope for. So congratulations on finishing your term. And Stacy, I'd like to invite you up here. We have something for you. We know that volunteers are priceless, as a former mayor once said, and we have something for you. We'd love for you to unwrap.
Don't tell me he gets Doug Chafee's parking spot.
Hey, this looks familiar. Honey, it's going on the garage.
And then Chief Kenabi and Chief Hughes, could you join me up here? I know you have a presentation you'd like to make.
Well, former mayor, most people don't realize that when you're a mayor, how much interaction the mayor has with the police chief and the fire chief. But we just wanted to say thank you for your support of public safety. He has been in contact with me from the police department. Whenever there's sirens going on, he's calling me, asking me what is happening. But, you know, he really gets his hands dirty. I mean, he wants to know what's happening in this community, he wants to know what he can do to help. And one of the major aspects he gave as a goal for Chief Kenabi and I was that we would work on ways to better communicate with our communities and to provide better service. And we took that to heart, and he was a great, great partner in doing that. And so we just have a gift for you that we hope doesn't necessarily go in your garage, but your family will understand that should, it belongs with the rest of the family photos. So with that, we give to you.
And I'll say a couple of words, and the sirens that you heard, I told the police chief, that's our firefighters out there doing a great job. And, Mr. Mayor, it's been a pleasure working with you. You've always been supportive, you've been right on target, and it's been a pleasure. And, you know, our loss is your family's gain, so thank you for your service.
That can't be outdone by the police chief. There's no rival over here, so.
And we have a final presentation from the city council. I don't know if Stacy's gonna let you use this at home, but...
Oh, sure she will. Honey. Very wonderful. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And now if our new mayor pro temp would like to make some comments? I know you have a special guest in the audience who never comes to city council meetings.
Yes, my husband Bill is back there. He's, he is raising his hand. How many years was he my sign man when I was running for campaigns? Yes, I do want to say something, and I want to say something about Greg. Greg has been an absolute delight as a mayor. He is extremely visible in our community. He's at virtually all social events. His mantra, "If you want respect, show respect," and even when commentators have been very, very disrespectful to him, he has maintained his equanimity, he has displayed grace under fire, he has handled some very rough situations. And even though Greg and I oftentimes agree on things, we don't always vote the same way, he maintains that affability. I really appreciated what Angela said about his displaying civility. Absolutely. Common sense and tenacity. sense and tenacity, yes, and it's been a pleasure to be with him, to serve with him on this council. I also wanted to say a few words about why I nominated Jennifer to be our mayor. Jennifer displays such leadership, and she did from the moment that we took our oaths of office in December of 2012. At the time, this council was very divided about who it was going to support for mayor, and Jennifer stuck to her guns, and she said, "Bruce Whitaker is going to be the mayor, and that's the end of that story." I was not very supportive of that, although later I came to believe that Bruce was a very, very good mayor as well. But because of Jennifer's leadership in that, we did not engage in those mayor wars that had typified the council up to that point, and we have had peace in the past four months, or the past four years, when it came to selecting the mayor. So for that, she is to be applauded. One of the speakers, before I nominated Jennifer, said something to the effect that after she was appointed to the met board, the Metropolitan Water District Board, that the director had asked her to step down. That is not true. When Jennifer was employed by Kirk Pringle, she actually went to our city attorneys to ask whether or not there was a conflict. She was told that there was a possibility of a conflict, and she voluntarily resigned. Since then, there have been a couple of times when her company was working on an issue that was before the city where she voluntarily recused herself. In my opinion, she has displayed leadership, and she has certainly displayed high ethics in her service on this council. And so I have absolutely no reservations whatsoever in nominating Jennifer, and I know she'll do a great job as our new mayor.
Well, as we close the meeting tonight, I just want to thank...
May I make a comment?
Oh, certainly.[1563.41][1563.41](laughing) Sure.
Well, I'd like to say I've enjoyed working with Jennifer on many things, like Love Fullerton Day, packing backpacks full of school supplies for children that couldn't afford them, being very concerned about our homeless issues, and of course, being especially concerned as a mother of two children. I've known Jennifer to be a person of considerable integrity and exceptional ability, and I pledge my support to work with you in every way I can, because I know you'll do an outstanding job.
Thanks. That's very kind of you. I really appreciate it.[1602.54][1602.54](applause) And so now, as we close, I just want to thank my council members for their support of me this evening, and I really look forward to working together through this next year to continue to move Fullerton forward. And I want to thank my family and friends who are here tonight, and the sweet little boys who have already fallen asleep, which is just adorable. And especially, you know, my husband, Sean, and my two kids are here tonight, and I couldn't, you know, like Greg, I mean, we have busy lives as parents of young children, and I couldn't do this without my husband and those two kids and the sacrifices they make and all the support they give me. So thank you, guys. And, you know, my priorities, yeah, give them a round of applause. Yeah, sure.[1654.01][1654.01](applause) You know, my priorities for this next year are going to look awfully familiar because they're the same priorities I've had since I was elected in 2012, and I anticipate this council will continue to focus on fixing our roads. We'll also focus on spurring economic development, really building the strong industrial, international, and manufacturing base that we have in this town, as well as maximizing our infrastructure assets that we have, like our airport and our train station. And we'll continue to focus on quality of life. You know, a speaker earlier on the Coyote Hills issue asked why I thought, you know, the earlier deal was a better deal with Chevron, and it was financial. I mean, we, in this, in this deal that we've approved now, we gave up $5 million in park fees that could have been spread through park poor areas of this town, and we, you know, dedicated those right back to that Coyote Hills land. Now, I agree with doing that, because this community said that open space at West Coyote Hills was more important than providing that money for the parks around the city. But when I talk about us focusing on quality of life, we are blessed in this town. In the area of West Coyote Hills, that is the least densely populated area of our town with the most parks, and this community is blessed to have over 50 parks, 30 miles of trails. When the new West Coyote Hills trails come on board, we'll have a total of 40 miles of trails. But there is still a neighborhood in town that does not have a safe park, and that's in our Garnett community. And so I am hopeful that 2016 will be the year that we build Pearl Park, because I think that every child in our town deserves a safe place to play and to be a kid. And so I look forward to working with all of you to make that happen. And I'm really optimistic about 2016, and I look forward to a really great year and sharing that great year with all of you. So thanks for being here tonight, and with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.